Happy Friday. The hour of convening has arrived and the Senate will now come to order at this time. I'd ask that all unauthorized persons exit our beautiful chamber. I've run out of ways to describe the Senator from the 53rd. He's just... What was your recommendation?
Comedian.
I would not use that word. It's my honor to recognize once again the distinguished Honorable Rules Chairman from Chickamauga.
Thank you, Mr. President, and what a great day, and thank you for your leadership on behalf of the people of Georgia. Today is, the Senator from the 31st told me this, the Senator from the 31st told me this, the Senator from the 31st told me that he's not paying attention. That it is National Pizza with the Works, except Anchovy Day. That kind of sounds made up, don't it? Also, on this date, in 1991, Atlanta Braves Tom Glavine wins the National Cy Young Award. Very fitting. And, Mr. President, the Journal's been read and found to be correct.
Tom Glavine's probably the last guy to average in the 80s, right? 88, 89, and still win a Cy Young. But he's left-handed. Are you left-handed? You act left-handed. Is there objection to dispensing with the reading of the Journal? The Chair hears none. The reading of the Journal is dispensed with. Is there objection to the confirmation of the Journal? The Chair hears none, and the Journal is confirmed. All Senators who have bills and resolutions, please bring them to the Secretary's desk at this time. It is now time for our morning roll call. It is now time for our morning roll call. Are there any motions to excuse? The Chair recognizes the Senator from the 33rd.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, y'all. I'd like for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 38th.
Can you say that one more time?
From the, from the 38th. Fifty-five, forty-two. For business outside the Capitol.
Without objection, the Senators from the 38th, 55th, and 42nd are excused. The Chair recognizes the Senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 19th for business outside of the Capitol.
Without objection, the Senator from the 19th is excused. The Chair recognizes the Senator from the 42nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 2nd for business outside the Capitol.
Without objection, the Senator from the 2nd is excused. Are there any additional motions to excuse? Chair once again recognizes the distinguished Senator from the 17th. Without, you're a great neighbor. Without objection, the Senator from the 16th is excused also. The Secretary will call the role of Senators. Signify your presence by voting the a's, which the Secretary will unlock the machine. All right, it's now time for a morning devotional. It's now time for a morning devotional. I'd ask that all Senators take your seats and cease all audible conversations. I'd ask that all Senators take your seats and cease all audible conversations. It's time for a morning devotional. Doorkeepers, please secure the chamber at this time. It's my honor to recognize the distinguished Senator from the 24th to lead us in our pledge of allegiance and to introduce to us the Chaplain of the Day.
Let us stand and say the pledge to the greatest flag in the country. I pledge allegiance to the flag. America, and to the public for which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now our great state's flag. I pledge allegiance to Georgia's flag, the principles it stands, wisdom, justice, moderation, courage. We got a rowdy bunch today. Ladies and gentlemen. I love each and every one of you. It gives me great honor to introduce the pastor of the day today. You know, I could do his bio, but knowing this man, I believe he would really want me to tell you about the great church that he has the honor to serve. Steve Harton is the lead pastor at Cowokee Baptist Church in Appleland, Georgia. A very historical church. A church that is the oldest Baptist church in the state of Georgia. He also has been there for 22 years. He's, uh, has had the honor and the privilege to be able to be married to his lovely wife, Susan, which is here today. Please stand, please. Let's give her a hand. For 36 years, she's been beside this man. But y'all, let's talk about Cowokee Baptist Church. He's also had the honor to serve as the lead pastor there for one of our former state Senators that served in this body. Jake Pollard, Senator Jake Pollard. He also has had the honor to be able to have baptism in a pool down in the woods by the oldest Baptist church, which Cowokee's built three times. But they have a baptism pool that's down in the woods that is spread, is fed by spring water, very cold water, very cold water. I had the honor to be baptized in this pool. Back in the, years back, when I was a child, I never will forget, and Cowokee was so generous to let other churches come there and have baptism. I never will forget, being a child, my dad was there to make sure they got all the frogs out of the baptism pool before the ladies would step foot in there. But it's just, this is a great way of life. But y'all, it has so much history. So many lives have been through this church. This man has made this church grow, and now it's one of the largest Baptist churches in Columbia County. Also, they've had three beautiful children, Kara, Quentin, and Johnny. Let's talk about Johnny just a little bit. Johnny is already where we are wanting to be one day. At the age of 18, Johnny passed away. But he's home and we not. So always remember that we still have a duty here on this earth until our day comes. It gives me great honor to bring you our pastor today, Steve Harton.
Mr. President, Senator Anderson, thank you. I'm honored and humbled to be here, and I can assure you that the water is still just as cold, and we still have frogs that have to be removed from that baptistry. People ask when they come and visit our church for the first time, they walk into the sanctuary, and then they look, and they remember they're at a Baptist church, and wonder why is there not a baptistry? It's because, as Lee shared, it is, it is outside. Before I pray for you and with you, I would just like to share something that I hope, this, I have nothing to offer you politically, and not arrogant enough to think I could help if I did. But I wanted to share something that many of you will recall. On December 17th, 1903, not that y'all were there or alive, breathing, but as a historical matter, two brothers, Orville and Wilbur Wright, in Kitty Hawk, North Carolina, did something that would later change the world. They got a plane, an airplane, to fly. The first time they got it off the ground, it flew for 12 seconds, the second time for 15 seconds, and then a third time for 59 seconds, for a total of 120 feet. They were incredibly excited, so they telegraphed their sister Catherine, who was back in Dayton, and the telegraph said this, "We have flown 120 feet. We'll be home for Christmas." Well, their sister also got so excited, she ran down to the newspaper, of the newspaper editor there in Dayton, and showed him the telegraph. And as he read it, somewhere in her excitement, he couldn't figure it out. He missed the part about flying 120 feet, and, um, and just said, "Okay, the bro, the boys will be home by Christmas. What's the big deal?" And as I think of, of that, it reminds me of the danger of missing the big picture. Sometimes it is easy to be caught up in important things, but you're still caught up in the important things that you miss the most important thing. Jesus and His disciples walked past a blind man one day, and to the disciples, the man was like a term paper. They started asking Jesus theological questions. But Jesus saw a man, a human being. So He spat in the ground, made some mud, put the mud on the man's eyes, told him to go wash his eyes. The man did, and he could see for the first time since birth. The man got in trouble. He had been an outcast before, while he was blind, and the religious leaders did not like the fact that he was healed on the Sabbath, and he became an outcast as a man with sight. At the end of the day, Jesus came up to the man, and He asked him this question, "Do you believe in the Son of Man?" And the man who had been born blind is now looking at the man who healed him and does not know. He had never seen Jesus. Jesus had sent him away before he could, before he could see. "Do you believe in the Son of Man?" And here, here was His response, "Who is He, sir, that I may believe in Him?" I will have to confess to you that there have been times where I have been guilty of missing the big picture in my life. And my encouragement to you is that in the midst of your incredibly important activities, the work that you do here for the people of our beautiful state, my hope and my encouragement is that you do not miss the most important thing in your life. When you go home, when you're with your family, when you go into your house of worship, when you kiss your children or grandchildren, that you not miss the Author and the Giver of it all, the Lord God. I'm thankful for you. I'm thankful that you represent as Senators the state of Georgia. And now I'd like to pray for you. Our Father, what a great day to come together. And I pray for the men and women in this chamber, for the ones that were not able to make it today. I pray for the work that they do. I ask God that you would give them wisdom, give them vision, Lord, that you would guard their choices that they, that they make, political choices, decisions, that will, that will impact millions of people. Lord, I would guess that that is a burden, but I pray for each one that they would be able to exercise the work that they do out of freedom and out of a sense of knowing the big picture. That, Lord, while man plans, you laugh, and you hold the work that is done by the people that are standing here in your hand, and, Lord, you look, and you love, and you give mercy, and you give grace. You give family, you give friends, you give people to work for. And God, for them, I pray, that beyond what they do in Atlanta, and for the people of Georgia, that, Lord, they would see that there is a God in heaven, that they matter to, and that sees them and stands before them. And, Lord, I pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen. God bless you, and thank you.
Senate will come back to order. Are there any unanimous consents? The Chair hears none. Does any Senator wish to rise on a point of personal privilege? Chair recognizes the Senator from the 52nd for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to make sure that we recognize Kestra Horvath today, who is, I believe this is her last day with us here. She has done a great job taking care of us, finding things that say, "Hey, don't you want to send this out?", and, and looking out for all of us. And she is moving to the DC area to work in international affairs, and she has family. I know her parents are up in northern Virginia and can certainly understand that. I do understand that she does have some pictures of the Senator of the 24th at the Rolling Stones concert last night, so if he, if he wants to send out a late press release before she leaves today and incorporate those pictures, I'm sure she could accommodate him. But as you go on your international affairs career, we hope that you'll keep Georgia on your mind.
Chair recognizes the Majority Whip for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I just wanted to come up and share a little thought with you today. It's our last day of the week before we go home. You know, every morning I try to get up and get ready to come up here and do the people's business, and I turn on Good Morning America, to where we get to watch the breaking news of the day, and get to watch Ginger Zee, the weather girl, and Michael Strahan, and Amy Robach, who was a dog, she went to UGA. You get to hear news stories about how much gas prices are going up, and how much the inflation is kicking in. We're seeing double-digit inflation. But the breaking news story of today that I thought I would share with you was, I wanted to bring to your attention that at midnight last night, Taylor Swift released her album, Red, Taylor's Version. This is a 30-song album, including new recordings of her classic hits, including State of Grace, Holy Ground, a 10-minute version of the All Too Well, as well as new previously Never Heard Vault songs before. In honor of this monumental event, if you visit a local Starbucks today and you order a grande caramel nonfat latte, they will write Taylor's Latte on the cup for you. Isn't that amazing? Now, you can download Red Taylor's Version on all streaming platforms now, and for Taylor's sake, I hope you do that. So I wanted to share that good news to you this morning. That was breaking news, Good Morning America. But I really came up here to do this in honor of our, our legislative assistant, Ryan Miller, who's going to be leaving us on November 30th. She's a huge Taylor Swift fan, and she wanted me to come up and share this great news for all of you out there. So y'all give her a warm goodbye as she leaves the Georgia Senate. Thank you.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 5th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. No, I'm not too excited. I'm okay. I'm here also to celebrate and the, all the young folks that work over here, help us out over here at the press room, or, you know, whatever, you know, office we have, they make us look good. So I wanted to come in, you know, to mention that about Ms. Kestra, that she's going to Washington DC, but my good friend, Senator from 52nd, you know, he beat me. But anyway, I thought I'm going to come by and say, "Congresswoman, Ms. Kestra, and Ms. Brian Miller, and whoever, all the young folks that work in this chamber and outside this chamber, in this building, we appreciate you. We thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it." I love the world.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 39th for a point of personal privilege.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. I rise today with some news from the 39th District that I wanted to share. Just earlier this week, the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia approved the naming of Georgia Tech's renovated Student Center in honor of our hero, Congressman John Lewis, who, of course, we all know as a renowned civil and human rights leader and a long-term U.S. Representative of Georgia's Congressional 5th District. Obviously, up until just this past January, when our former colleague, Nikima Williams, took his place as representing the 5th District, he's been my congressman for my entire, well, I'll say 22 years here, minus the one. When this center opens in the summer of 2022, the John Lewis Student Center will be part of the larger newly constructed and reimagined campus center, and will serve as the central gathering place for the tech campus. I was recently looking at some photos of my family and myself with the Congressman through the years. He was a friend, and we both shared a passion for the arts, and in particular, visual arts. And I'll always cherish- a passion for the arts, and in particular, visual arts. And I'll always cherish our many conversations. But perhaps what you don't know about this man is that he was a lifelong student himself, who was always curious and open to learning more, which is a quality that everyone but us as legislators especially should bring to bear. So a congratulations to our forever hero, Congressman John Lewis, for this deserved acknowledgement, and a thank you to the Board of Regents. With that, I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 34th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Senate. I rise with a heavy heart. Today, we are, some of y'all, I won't be going, to the finals farewell for one of our fellow senators. But I got a messenger from Trip Talison, and he simply is saying, hey, Senator C, I thought it was unbelievable fitting that this popped up on my Facebook memory today. He loved all of y'all. And what he was referring to is a picture that Ross and I took the last time he was up here. And because he was such a friend, and because I had little or no knowledge of agriculture, we would often talk about it, I just felt it in my spirit to come and share. And for those of you who have not yet visited the fourth floor, where the most up-to-date, interactive agriculture display is in the Capitol, which yours truly made it happen, in addition to all of you all, I just wanted to remember our colleague on this day. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll yield the well.
You have a consent calendar of privileged resolutions before you. Does any senator wish to remove a resolution from the consent calendar? The chair sees none. Is there objection to adoption of the resolutions on the consent calendar? The chair here is none, and the resolutions on the consent calendar are adopted. Are there any motions to withdraw and commit? The chair sees none. We're now going to move on to the rules calendar. Mr. Secretary, will you please read the caption to House Bill 1 EX?
House Bill 1 EX by Representative Rich of the 97th. A bill to be entitled an act to provide for the composition and number of state House districts, to provide for a short title, provide when members of the House of Representatives elected shall take office, to provide for the continuation of the present representative districts until a certain time, to provide that the provisions of this act shall supersede and replace the districting plan, and certain changes thereto, to provide for related matters, to provide an effective date, repeal specific acts to repeal conflicting laws, and for other purposes. Mr. President, the Senate Committee on Reapportionment and Redistricting recommends this bill do pass. Senator Kennedy of the 18th District Chair.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 18th to present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, colleagues, and happy Friday. It's been a long week. I know a lot of us are looking forward to going home, spending some time with family. I am here, as the president said, to present HB 1 EX to you. And this, of course, is the maps for the House that they have proposed, and they have passed out of their chamber. I want to talk a little bit about the process, a little bit about the substance, but not in the detail that, of course, that we did for our maps. But they had a good process, very similar to ours. You'll remember the me talking about and so many of you that are either on the redistricting committee, or that chose to go around the state and listen to public comment. Well, the House did that with us. Those were joint House and Senate redistricting meetings. We had 11 town hall meetings, nine around the state, and two that were done by Zoom for folks that could Zoom in in case they couldn't attend some of the ones that were close to their homes. I also know that Chairman Rich did a great job of taking time to spend time with her members. And she offered time, and I think the vast majority of the House members availed themselves of one-on-one meetings with the chair, so that she could get information from her members, just like we did on our side. The bill has also gone through the normal House Committee vetting process. They too, like we ran our meetings, received public comment. And what we have before us is their map. This is the home map, excuse me, this is the House's map, and their bill. And for those of you that haven't been involved in the process, and even I wasn't years ago, the last time we did redistricting, as is customary in our chamber, just as they honor, they, when we send them our map, they don't change and involve themselves in the process of deciding what Senate districts ought to look like. They honor that process and pass our map. We traditionally have done the same thing, and I would ask this body to honor their work in presenting their map to us for our passage. However, we do have our own independent obligations, and I think those are minimally, or those are, to make sure that what they have sent us in this bill is constitutional, that it's legal, and that it's been and has involved a fair process. And I will tell you that all three of those points are absolutely yes. On the constitutional side, our first responsibility, of course, is to balance the population under the US Constitution, and they have done that, just as we did on our side. Districts have to be substantially the same size, and we generally, they have generally drawn this with a deviation of no more than 1.5%. They've also been very particular in making sure that they've complied with the Voting Rights Act. Y'all heard a lot about that this week and last week, as we've gone through this process. The House map presented to you complies with the Voting Rights Act, and it creates a majority-minority districts and new minority-opportunity districts. Their map, in this Bill 1 EX, has 49 districts that are majority-black voting-age-population districts. And in addition to that, 27 districts that are a majority-non-white voting-age population, for a total of 76 minority-opportunity districts. They too observed what we did with regard to looking for communities of interest, and also trying to avoid county splits. And I think they've done a good job with that. Comparatively to 2001, where the Democrats drew the maps for that cycle, those maps split 80 counties into 147 districts for 180 members while using a deviation of plus or minus 5%. That was because there were also multi-member districts in those maps from 2001. The current map that we're living under, and that the House is operating under from the 2011 cycle, split fewer counties and split only 73. I'm pleased to tell you that this map, the House has worked hard, just like we did on our side, to split even fewer counties. And they have reduced that number from 73 down to 69 counties, with a tighter deviation number of plus or minus 1.5%. This map also tried to do their best in not pairing incumbents, something we were very good at on our side, and I think they've done a good job with their map. Comparatively, though, the 2001 maps that were drawn at that time by the Democrats paired 37 of 74 Republican incumbents. Let me say that again. 37 of 74 Republican incumbents were paired against each other, but only nine of the 105 Democrats were paired against each other. The current maps that we operate under and that the House lives under maintain most of the incumbents. And I understand from their side, and y'all have seen some of the press coverage probably, that no one's terribly happy about the pairings of the plan. But the plan only pairs incumbents that's being proposed in this bill, where the population deviations required such a pairing, and there was really no other workable solution. The one other point of interest you might, or curiosity you might have about those pairings? Do they appear to be politically driven? Well, the answer is no. You have one Republican-Democrat pairing. You have two Republican-on-Republican pairings, and you have only one Democrat-on-Democrat pairings. You may have seen some of the press recently, and in fact, I was pleased to see that Stephen Fowler of Georgia Public Broadcasting did an article yesterday, in fact, where he wrote about the efforts that were made to go around the state and get public comment, and identified so many examples, we've talked about on our side, but he identified so many examples on the House side of where requests were made by various House District areas that are actually seen and are manifest in the maps that they have passed and that the maps that you're here to consider. Would also tell you that Chairman Rich has worked hard, and she, in all the work that was done, has tried to honor the request of her members, and that changes, I understand, were made in the maps that were formulated through their process that honored and respected and accommodated requests that were made from Republicans and from Democrats in the maps that you have. So with that, that's the House map. And, Mr. President, if I have questions, I'll be happy to answer them, or otherwise, I'll yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 42nd for a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will the chairman yield?
I do to my friend.
Thank you, thank you. During the committee hearings, it was mentioned that a University of Texas professor did the racially polarized voting analysis for our maps. Can you tell me who that person is?
Senator, I'm sorry, I don't. That information may have been revealed during the process on the House side, but I don't know the name.
Is there a way that we could be given the name of the experts that advised the majority party during this process?
Sure. I think if you'll make that request of, I assume you're focusing on the House, because we're here talking about the House map. We've already passed our Senate map. But I assume if you'll pass that request along to the Chair of the House Redistricting Committee, it will be up to them to respond however they think appropriate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You have no more questions?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll yield the well.
Does any other senator wish to speak for or against the measure? Chair recognizes the Senator from the 28th to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank our redistricting committees in both this chamber and in the other chamber. Drawing maps is not easy. When you have population shifts like we've had in this state, lines move. And as we know, that once lines move, it makes it very difficult. And sometimes we end up with things we don't like. And you look up in Calweda County, and we've got some folks up in North Calweda that aren't excited about what their map looks like. And we've seen it on display up here. They've come to the committee meetings, and, you know, I want, y'all to know that they're loud, sometimes obnoxious, crazy. But I want y'all to know that they're my crazies. They're my crazies. We're bound together. They're mine. I'm theirs. I want them to know that. I think they know that. But I definitely want y'all to know that. So one of my people back home, and that part of the area that doesn't like his, what he thinks is going to be his new representation, he told me the other day, says, sometimes you have to lose it all to gain something worth having. And this is a man I respect, a man I ask for guidance, ask for advice. But I want y'all to think about that. Sometimes you have to lose it all to gain something worth having. I want my citizens in North Calweda to think about that. They think they're going to lose conservative values. They think they're going to lose conservative leadership in that part of the area. But they're not. They're going to gain more. And we're going to fight, and we're going to win it. But again, I want to thank the chairman, the Madam Chair over in the House. These weren't easy decisions. I understand that. Not everybody got, nobody got everything they wanted. A lot of people didn't get anything they wanted. But again, sometimes you have to lose it all to gain something worth having. Thank you. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 39th to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President, and fellow senators. Yes, this year's redistricting process had challenges due to COVID, and the late census data, and major population changes. And yet, the reapportionment committee began to gather public comment before the data was available. The committee put the cart before the horse. The committee put the symbolism of public engagement ahead of what the public really needed. And we are feeling the impact of that failure now. Communities across the state learned for the first time last week exactly how their representation would change. And in response, they were given two options: come to the state Capitol in the middle of a workday, where the reapportionment committee may or may not be taking public comment, or they could submit their feedback to an online portal for it to be filed away with no response. I would ask you all to consider how often we so eagerly reverse this process for a regular piece of legislation. For a bill concerning truck drivers, we hear from the Economic Development Authority on the latest employment statistics. For a bill concerning funding for a state agency, we ask how that investment will be spent. But for this bill concerning the representation of all Georgians across the state, it was apparently fine to ask the people to respond to data that did not yet exist in a map that had not yet been drawn. This is not the open and transparent process that Georgians demanded. They have made their wishes clear. Every person that we heard from during testimony in committees in both chambers had one thing in common: they wanted more time. This current version of the map was available to voters for just two days. The public definitely deserves more than two days to review changes to a map of 180 House districts. This expedited timeline left voters with just two days to find an analysis done by a third party to see how the Republican map proposal here today affected them. And I'm, of course, assuming that most Georgians don't have access to the same extremely expensive and in-depth software as the General Assembly's reapportionment office. Maybe they'll soon be represented by an elected member that doesn't represent their values in the proposed map. And maybe their district has been drawn by the Republicans for someone who isn't even yet in this building. And whether a person believes this map is good for their community or bad for it, the central question is this: how could they know with this rushed legislative process? This redistricting process changes the future of Georgia, and we owe it to the residents of this state to take the time to get it right. Thank you, and I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 42nd to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, colleagues. First, I want to follow up on something the Senator from the Senator from the 39th mentioned about a rush process and how mistakes that really are unlike other mistakes we might make down here can be enshrined into law, and then we have to live with them for 10 years due to a failure to just take a deep breath, allow for citizen input, and get a few things right that don't impact partisan balance or the Voting Rights Act or other grand themes that we may be operating under when it comes to the maps writ large. My district, I represent the city of Decatur, and it has 25,000 people. It's a small city. It's had four representatives the past 10 years due to the bacon strip-type nature of the districts running through that part of DeKalb County in the House of Representatives. Decatur had requested and thought that they had been able to shrink their legislative delegation by a bit, down to three people, which they felt was something more manageable for their small city. And when you at first glance at the map, you see that that occurred. Only upon further reflection, blowing up the maps during this process, it's moving very quickly, did they realize that actually there are three parcels with no people as of the 2020 census that actually are moved into a, or have been mapped into a fourth district. Meaning that despite their wishes to hopefully go down to three, and in fact, I believe the intent of reapportionment and some other bodies working on the maps in the House, they instead still have four representatives, which I think we can all agree is pretty excessive if it's unnecessary for a city of 25,000 people. This change was caught, I'm sorry, this problem was caught by City of Decatur officials brought up in the House as soon as it was raised, as soon as it was noticed. No steps were taken to correct it. So the officials came with a plea yesterday, the Mayor of Decatur, to the reapportionment and redistricting committee in the Senate. And reasons given for why this reasonable request to unify this very small piece of three parcels of land with no voters into the rest of the three districts already contained in the House map for City of Decatur. Reasons given as to why that change would not be made included things like the Voting Rights Act might prohibit it. This would cause a cascading impact throughout the map. Well, I want to make sure that I'm clear about what we're talking about. We're talking about three parcels with no voters that were inadvertently stuck in a fourth district. It does not have partisan implications. It doesn't have population implications. There's no implication on the Voting Rights Act. There's no cascading impact throughout the map to accommodate their wishes and take their feedback. There's no real impact at all, as a matter of fact, other than to the residents of that city and the people running that city that had made a not unreasonable request to try to not have three parcels with no voters, bring them a new representative, pushing their delegation to four members for this very small city. None of the reasons given for why we won't consider that have any basis in truth. The truth is, we just don't want to bother. We just want to rush this process through so fast that we won't even slow down to take reasonable technical changes from communities and listen to their feedback. Now, if the City of Decatur were not represented by all Democrats, maybe those little technical changes would be taken into account, and they're just being disregarded because their legislation happens to be made up of Democrats. You know, the Senator from the 28th said, "Some of these people coming down about Coweta are crazy, but they're my crazy." Well, I'm here to tell you that there is nothing that the City of Decatur officials are saying that is remotely crazy. They're saying, "Will you listen to us on a little technical change?" Perhaps there is an actual reason why it would be prohibitively difficult to accommodate that request out of the City of Decatur. But I haven't heard any reason that has one ounce of truth to it. The truth is just, we don't want to. We don't want to take the time, and we don't want to listen. And that does a big disservice to the citizens of Georgia to ram something through that impacts people for 10 years with no regard for little accommodations that would be easy to do, that would benefit their communities. And that's pretty sad. That's pretty sad. I want to talk about the maps overall for just a second. What we're seeing with this map, with our Senate map, probably with the congressional maps to come, is part of, as I mentioned in my Senate speech, an effort to enshrine white minority rule and Republican minority rule throughout the state of Georgia for the next 10 years. It's part of a systematic disenfranchisement, themes that we've been seeing now over and over. Eight months ago, we were fighting against SB 202, a law that made it harder for some people to vote and allows the majority party to interfere with and take over local election offices. Now we've got gerrymandered maps that minimize minority participation just enough to keep the House and Senate in Republican hands. Then, on Wednesday, we saw blatant abuse of power grabs by certain majority party members to try to take over local control in counties where the voters have picked who they want to be in control, and it wasn't those members of the General Assembly. Now, why would you try to insert yourself where you were not elected? Well, you may see that you may not have those votes in the future. But when you got the power now, you want to do everything you can to pass maps and change rules over the cries of Georgians from both parties who are saying, "Slow down, listen, and do your job," which is to represent them. Both in the Gwinnett example and in the Decatur maps example, what's missing is that none of this is organic, coming from communities. It's what do the majority party of 236 people want to do? Georgians know why Republicans are in such a hurry. It's not because the census was late. It's not because we got to get out by Thanksgiving. It's because the clock is ticking. The voters of Georgia chose Democrats to represent them in two recent statewide elections. And if it really seemed to the majority party that that was just a fluke, or they really wanted to engage in the battle of ideas that's supposed to underpin democracy, we wouldn't be seeing extreme efforts to gerrymander maps or pass voter suppression laws. When it comes down to it, the voters of Georgia are ready to move on. But if they evince their intent to go in a different direction, choose different people and values to represent them, instead of adjusting your platform, making yourselves more amenable, getting more people behind your ideas, we see voter suppression and gerrymandering. That's a real shame. Thank you, Mr. President. Happy to answer any questions.
Chair recognizes the Majority Leader for a question.
Thank you, Senator. This is pretty straightforward and easy. When did you find out about the three parcels?
I found out about it, Mr. Leader, and thank you for the question. I found out about it not last night, but the night before. So the night before the hearing that we had.
So somebody, from what I understood during the committee meeting yesterday, noticed it over the weekend. I think it was the mayor. So she went to the committee meeting on the House side to voice her concerns at the committee meeting on the House side?
Mr. Leader, I'm not totally sure. I think that it may have already been out of committee by the time the mayor and the city manager noticed this small problem.
Okay.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 46th for a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will the Senator yield?
Certainly.
I was in the committee meeting also in the three census blocks, I think it is, we're talking about. These are not full precincts. They related, have zero human beings living in them at this time. Not a single voter now, but they expect there will be in the future. My question is, is it worth it to the Senate as a body to mess with this House map over three census blocks with no voters and risk them then violating our decades-long gentleman agreement that we allow the House to draw their maps and we draw ours? Because your district and all of ours could have a whole bunch of technical changes made to them in the House if we go down this path on a mission for zero voters at the present time. Is that worth it to us as a body to vote this map down to make a technical change that the House did not deem appropriate, knowing that in exchange, we are now opening our map up to them making technical changes?
Thank you for the question, Senator. I mean, what I would say is that, again, and I could pull out many other examples, it's frankly just emblematic of moving so fast that you're shutting out communities and voices who are supposed to be at the center of kind of what we're doing on something pretty critical. If you insist on moving so fast, it's not really a matter of, "Do we want to change theirs?" Or, you know, I don't really see it that way. I see it as a matter of, why is it that we will not allow, in this process, communities to be able to make reasonable requests that don't really have an impact, but might help them out? That's kind of my point.
And Senator, further you?
Sure.
So, this is, these are House districts you're worried about, not your Senate district. You're a member of the Senate now. And so you're going to advocate what your own House members within your Senate district failed to do in the House? Or according to their chairman knowingly considered and decided to keep the map the way they had it?
I believe that it was brought to the attention of that delegation, and they did raise the issue.
Thank you.
You have no more questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 35th to speak to the measure.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, colleagues. I've received several calls from people in my district as well as my House members that share portions of my district and asked me if I would stand today. So I rise in opposition to House Bill 1 EX. The United States Constitution, as well as the Georgia Constitution, requires the legislature to redraw these lines every decade. So Georgians have equal representation under one person, one principle. One person, one vote. This principle is paramount to ensuring Georgians have equal representation regardless of race, political party, or their street address. In fact, the Equal Protection Clause of the United States Constitution requires states to redistrict with substantially equal population. The redistricting guidelines adopted by the House Legislative and Congressional reapportionment Committees also require House districts to be drawn to, and I quote, "achieve a total population that is substantially equal as practicable, considering the principles listed below," in quotations. Equal population and equal representation is an objective value proven by data, data, and statistics. The data and statistics show us objectively that the Republican-drawn map is not drawn to provide equal representation to all Georgians. The higher the deviation, the more unequal the representation. 10 years ago, yes, the House district maps were drawn with a deviation range between .99% to .99% and a total deviation of 1.98%. The map on the floor today for a vote has a deviation range of 1.40% to 1.34% and a total deviation of 2.74%. This higher deviation is contrary, excuse my voice, to fair maps and the one-person, one-vote principle. The data and statistics also show that this Republican map fails to reflect the partisan preferences of voters. This map creates a significant Republican advantage. It reduces the share of the Democratic electorate to two current Democratic districts, HD 48 and HD 105. It carves two new districts out of the Democratic metropolitan Atlanta area, HD 99 in Gwinnett and HD 53 in Buckhead, that are also drawn for Republican advantage. This is not a fair map. The Republicans split 184 voting precincts. The map proposed by the House, Georgia House Democratic Caucus, splits only 137 voter precincts. Splitting fewer precincts helps keep communities together. So Georgians have demanded fair maps. That's all they want. And Georgians deserve those fair maps. The data and statistics show here that there is more work to be done on the proposed maps before us. And for these reasons, I am voting no to House Bill 1 EX. And I urge all to vote no. And let's go back to the drawing board. I thank you, and I yield the well. Thank you. I would take questions, but I have to sit down. I'm trying to recuperate here. So, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Man, I'm digging those shoes. Look at those shoes.
Concentrate, Butch.
There you go.
Proton. Chair recognizes the Senator from the 36th to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am in the well this morning as we consider this bill to flag some realities around Georgia and voting rights and federal law. You know, we as Senate and House members, members of the General Assembly, this year have this tremendous responsibility. It's a responsibility to provide the public with fair, non-gerrymandered maps for the districts in the House and the Senate in which people will be elected next year in the 2022 cycle. And I want to point out, there's something unique about this redistricting process here for our state because it's the first full redistricting cycle in Georgia where we're not being pre-cleared. Our maps are not we're not being precleared, our maps are not being precleared by the Department of Justice. Since 1971 preclearance, the 1965 Voting Rights Act provides that Georgia is one of the states that has preclearance by the Justice Department for any and all maps that are drawn. That requirement has been removed and it really places, I think, more of a serious burden, if you will, on us to play by the rules and play fair. Even without this preclearance requirement, which was removed by the Supreme Court, the map passed by the House, the map passed by the Senate must unequivocally comply with Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act of 1965. And also, I'd point out that the very House map before us should be guided by the Guidelines of the House Legislative and Congressional Reapportionment that says, quote, "All plans adopted by the committee will comply with Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 as amended." Now, as Georgians, I think any of us that are willing to look, take a look in a balanced way at this state's history, we would all have to agree that Georgia has a long and demonstrated history of racial discrimination regarding voting rights. That's why we were in the preclearance list of states requiring preclearance by the Justice Department, based on that history. And that makes it really essential, in my opinion, that we comply rigorously with Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, which is still in effect, to ensure that fair maps are drawn and enacted that don't discriminate against voters of color in our state. A racial bloc voting analysis is the tool that would inform us and provide the information to all of us about the impact of the maps. And it's critical that this analysis be done to ensure that the maps that we draw and we pass protect the rights of voters of color to elect candidates of their choice. That's what it's all about. But I will stand before you today and say, unfortunately, we don't know if a complete racial bloc voting analysis was conducted for this map that's on the floor today. There hasn't been full disclosure to the public or to members of the House, and I would argue the members of the Senate, that this complete racial bloc voting analysis has been done. Who's the individual? What's the name of the person or the firm retained to conduct such analysis on this Republican drawn map? We're in the dark. We don't know. What I do know, and I think many of us in this chamber believe this, that the Republican map fails to reflect the growing diversity of our great state, fails to provide enough opportunity districts, and dilutes existing opportunity districts. In that regard, this map threatens the ability of voters of color to elect their candidates of choice. And we've had no transparency as to the known or unknown impact of voters of color because we lack the background on whether a complete racial bloc voting analysis was done and who did it. We're in the dark on those matters. That's not transparency. That's not proceeding with a full understanding of the impact of these maps. Critically important in a state like Georgia with our history, a very conflicted history around providing full access, one person, one vote, to people of color across this great state. So I will be voting no on House Bill 1 EX. I urge you to join me in that and insist that we get fuller information on the impact of these maps and that we are in compliance with Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act before we move forward. Thank you, and I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Minority Leader to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Senate, I rise today to speak in opposition to House Bill 1 EX. The Republican drawn map for redistricting the Georgia House of Representatives because this map fails to reflect that nearly all of Georgia's growth over the past decade resulted from growth in communities of color. The Republican drawn map instead seeks to solidify Republican control of the State House for the next decade by ignoring the House's own guidelines for the redistricting process. The Republican map has a range of deviation from ideal population that is 50% greater than the current map's deviation. Population equality and the bedrock principle of one person, one vote should never take a backseat to partisanship. Another guideline requires all maps to comply with Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act of 1965. This provision prohibits all forms of racial discrimination in voting, and it ensures racial fairness in the redistricting process. But the Republican map contains fewer opportunity districts for voters of color than the House Democratic proposal and intentionally put two existing opportunity districts at risk, House District 105 and House District 154, undermining the ability of voters of color to elect candidates of their choice. Instead of reflecting the growing diversity of our state, the map resists its effects. The people of Georgia deserves better. The guidelines also say that maps should avoid splitting precincts. However, the Republican map splits more precincts than necessary, as demonstrated by the House Democratic proposal, as many of those precincts appear to have been split either for partisan purposes or to harm minority voters. As for communities of interest, the guidelines say to protect communities of interest where possible, but the Republican drawn map fails to do that. For example, their map carves up Coweta County into several pieces and put rural and frankly Republican-leaning parts of that county into Democratic districts that extend north well into urban parts of Fulton County. This map ignores the pleas of the people of Coweta County. The House Democratic map demonstrated it is possible to keep the Coweta community intact. A few additional examples, including splitting the Stonecrest community into Cab County into three separate districts, splitting Stockbridge between two districts, and splitting the historic roadway community of African-American Christians in Roswell. The Republican drawn map also violates the guidelines by pairing incumbents unnecessarily. Their map pairs two Democratic representatives in Gwinnett County of all places, a majority-minority county that also saw the largest population growth in Georgia since the last census, despite the fact that there's an open seat nearby that either one of them could have been drawn into. Now, why not utilize that? Why not take advantage? Now, the House Democratic Caucus produced a map that avoids dismantling any districts in which minority voters currently have an opportunity to elect candidates of their choice, and it creates three new opportunity districts that reflect the tremendous growth in Georgia's diversity over the last decade. The Democratic map also splits fewer precincts than the Republican map. It preserves the core of the existing districts and avoids pairing incumbents unless absolutely necessary because of the dramatic shifts in Georgia's population over the last decade. Throughout the Democratic drawn map, the proposed changes were dictated by population growth and the guidelines and not by trying to secure advantage for any one group or faction. The House Democratic map respects communities of interest like the one in Coweta and the one in Athens-Clark County. It ensures that the voters of Athens-Clark would be able to elect at least two members of the House, while the Republican map makes the fragmentation worse by splitting the county into four pieces. Athens-Clark County deserves better. I urge this committee, as have other of my colleagues, to slow down this process so that we can fix the deficiencies in the Republican drawn map and give all Georgians a fair opportunity to learn how this proposed map will impact their ability to elect candidates of their choosing. The people of Georgia demanded a fair and transparent redistricting process. We heard that through all of the meetings when we traveled around the state. They deserved, they demanded a fair and transparent redistricting process with the opportunity to review and comment on proposed maps before votes are taken. What they got instead was a rush process with a substitute map before us today, released one hour before public comment was scheduled to begin on Monday of this week. Public comment on this map, including from Republicans, was overwhelmingly negative, and it was promptly ignored. Republicans voted the map out of committee on partisan lines without making a single change to the map after hearing from the people. This map also passed out of the House on partisan lines, although two Republicans joined with all Democrats to oppose it. The people of Georgia deserve better. The people of Georgia deserve a map that complies with the guidelines adopted to govern this process. But what they appear to be getting instead is a partisan map designed to entrench Republican power that gives short shrift to the minority communities that have powered Georgia's tremendous growth over the last decade. Thank you, Mr. President, and as I stated, I will be voting against 1 EX. Thank you for your time. Thanks for listening to my comments. And I have said so many times, here we are again. I wish that I could come to this well and celebrate what we're doing here, but I cannot. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield.
Does any other Senator wish to rise to speak to the measure? The chair sees none and now recognizes the Senator from the 18th to close debate.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning again, colleagues. I'm not going to stay down here too long, but I do want to raise some points, and I want to address some things that have been said this morning that just, quite frankly, don't add up. They don't make sense. This map process has got a lot to do about numbers. We'll come talk about numbers in a moment. But you know, interestingly, we heard from one of our Democratic colleagues just a few moments ago that this redistricting process really put the cart before the horse, that why did we go around and get public comment before we had maps to show the folks? Even though the same Senator acknowledged that the normal process of six to eight months to do this job, we had six to eight weeks. So what would be the alternative proposed by the Democrats? Well, it would be wait till you get the data, wait till it's confirmed, which was September, draw you some maps, and then guess what? We wouldn't have practical time for input, would we? So then they would be down here saying, you did it wrong. You should have had meetings before the data because you should have known there wasn't time to go get the public input after the maps were drawn. Folks, that's what my buddy calls, that's one of those heads I win, tails you lose proposition. Heads I win, tails you lose. You can't win that. Don't be pulled off into a rabbit hole with comments like that, talking about the timeframe and talking about the process when we did the best we could. Was it perfect? Of course not. No process ever is. There was a comment that things that were learned last week for the first time. We talked a lot in our maps, and I addressed a lot, what happened in 2001? How did the Democrats do it? And my understanding is, in fact, that with the House process, that these maps have been open and available for consideration longer than certainly when the Democrats were in charge in 2001, and maybe longer than ever, available for comment, but it's just not good enough. Let me also address something, and the Senator asked, I think, a fair question, and it was who's the expert that the House relied upon? And so I've been able to ascertain that, and that is Dr. Tom Brunel of the University of Texas. That's who was sought out for expert opinion. Interestingly, though, when the House Chair asked the Democrats to provide their expert on racial polarized voting, they refused to provide that information in committee. Just once again, the process that we have engaged in, that the House Republicans have engaged in, has been completely fair and completely transparent. The Senator from the 42nd talked about a rush process and talked about the issues with the city of Decatur. Well, let's look at the facts and let's look at the timeline, and you tell me who created a rush process. And just a little bit of background on this is that, y'all probably know, counties are supposed to share updated precinct boundaries with the reapportionment office and are regularly asked to do that. DeKalb County did not update its precincts prior to the special session as they should have. Neither did a number of other counties, admittedly. But if we paused every time we discovered a precinct that a county had not updated, we would never finish drawing these maps. For this change, the mayor learned about it over the weekend. I remind you all, today is Friday. But over the weekend, the mayor learned about it, that is, this past weekend, which is, if my counting is right, is at least six days ago, but did not contact Chair Rich or the reapportionment office in the House. Instead, they waited 10 minutes before our Senate Redistricting Committee meeting to email the reapportionment office and then told Chairman Rich while we were in the committee meeting. So I ask you, who's really following a transparent process of getting information that's out there, of getting information in a way that can be used, of putting information and posturing data in a way that can be input? The city and the Senator from the 42nd and the House Democrats should have gone to the House Chair, but they didn't. There's no reason to further delay this process over a change like this, especially when the city waited until the very last moment when there was no practical way to make any My good friend, the Senator from the 35th, talked about population, equal population and equal representation. And I know she means well, but folks, I just don't understand the fuzzy math. The 2001 deviation for the maps created by the Democrats was 5% up or down. So if you keep in count, that's a 10% swing, y'all, 10 points up or down was the maps, with the maps they drew, and that was the yardstick they determined that was fair for the deviation on population. And that was the yardstick they determined that was fair for the deviation on population. What about this map? One point five percent, actually less than, one point five percent up or down. If I do the math right, that's a total of three. So the Democrats say that a three percent swing is just not right. It denies equal representation. Twenty years ago, a ten-point swing was perfectly acceptable in what they implemented. Again, folks, I don't understand that one. And then finally, I guess, being in the well and knowing the press is watching, they just couldn't not do it. Talking about this in terms of voter suppression and gerrymandering. Really? Voter suppression? We heard so much about that last session that even those in the liberal media and certain Democrats nationally said, you know what? We got sold a bill of goods. We were told what was in S B two oh two and it just wasn't true. But here we go. Let's bring it up. No basis, no rational relationship between anything in this map proposed by the House and anything that could look like voter suppression. But let's throw it out there. Maybe the press will take it and run with it and say, there they go. Georgia Republicans doing it again. But no nexus, no nexus, no relationship, no connectivity. But let's throw it out there. Come on, folks. Let's have some intellectual honesty. And speaking of that, my final comment is I think we truly have entered the Twilight Zone. We had Democrats come to this well today and actually said it in committee before. Why are y'all talking about so much being compliant with the Voting Rights Act? I'm tired of hearing about that. Let's talk about these other things. Really? Really? Our ensuring that we are complying with the Voting Rights Act and somehow that's not important to a Democrat, elected Democrat? That's when you know the maps must be right. That's when you know we've gotten, we've got it done right. Ours were right. The House maps were right. When the only argument takes them so far into the Twilight Zone that they want to say, why are y'all talking about being compliant with the Voting Rights Act? I appreciate your time. This is a good map. I remind you finally, this is their map that they've worked hard on. Let's honor that process. Let's vote for the map. And, Mr. President, I yield the will.
Is there objection to agreeing to the report of the committee which is favorable to the passage of the bill? The chair hears none and the report of the committee is agreed to. Is there objection to the main question being ordered? The chair hears none and the main question's ordered. The question's on the passage of the bill. All those in favor, vote yea. Opposed, nay. The secretary will unlock the machine. On the passage of the bill, the yeas are thirty-two, the nays are twenty-one. This bill having received the requisite constitutional majority is therefore passed. The moment we've all been waiting for. The chair recognizes the majority leader for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Senate stand adjourned until ten a.m. on Monday, fifteen November, twenty twenty-one pursuant to H R two E X.
Mr. Secretary, please read your announcements.
The Rules Committee meeting, uh, scheduled for today has been canceled. The Senate Retirement Security for Georgian Study Committee will meet in room four fifty at twelve o'clock noon. That completes the order.
Easy, easy. Does any Senator wish to make an announcement? Nope. All, uh, the majority leader has moved that the Senate stand adjourned until Monday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one at ten a.m. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Senate stands adjourned. Have a great weekend.